Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:00 PM. And the March 6, 2024 City Council meeting should come to work, however, we do not have a court at this time. So what we're going to do is we're going to reset the clock and try again at 6:05. All right, it's now 6:05. I just spoke with Councilmember Roberts. He'll be here in about 10 minutes, so we will push the meeting back till just over 6:16. Thank you. We're going to start the meeting after the evening. It is now 6:16 PM. The March 6, 2024 City Council meeting, and our floor tonight's occasion is presented by the late up here, Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mary. For those of you who don't like to bow your head, please do so now. Heavenly Father, Father, we come to you this evening, and we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us, Father, to engage in meaningful discussion, and help us all, Father, to grow closer to our community. Father, may all our decisions be righteous in your sight for our benefit and your glory. Father, please be with our law enforcement and all our first responders and keep them safe from harm as they serve our city. Father, our citizens, our staff, our mayor, and our council members are often tasked with making decisions for our wonderful city. And, Father, you have blessed us with free will to make those decisions. I pray that we all remember that our important decisions always seem to work out best when we go to you first, Father, to pray for direction. Father, you know that in several days, our city will be voting on some key issues that may impact our city for many years to come. I pray, Father, that we all take the necessary time and understand the issues at hand prior to casting our votes. Continue, Father, to remind us that all we do here this evening, all that we may accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth for the greater glory of you, Father. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Now will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone, nation, and God in his visible liberty and justice for all. Ms. Riles, would you please call?
Councilmember Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reifler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. I appreciate it. You know, you guys over there on the floor, you've got open seats, so next meeting, come up and join us, okay? I'm getting used to you. All right, our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Do I have any motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I'm going to give that one to Mr. Roberts. All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Now we move on to citizens' comments. If any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. We ask that you limit your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to direct all questions and comments directly to the council. If any council members would like to respond to citizens' comments, please hold your responses until we reach council comments. If the city manager or the city attorney would like to address citizens' comments, please hold your responses until your designated report time. Would any citizens like to address the council about any topic not already on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please come up and state your name and address.
How you doing? Randy Lovett, that's 10313 East Street. Just to let you know, an incident from Saturday. We had a little dinner get-together for my son-in-law's mother's birthday, and one of the guests, 85-year-old fellow named Rick Estell from Dunedin, he couldn't make it about 8 o'clock. Anyhow, when he left, he found he had a $55 ticket for parking on the street from an officer. I think his name's I. Reedy. Anyhow, I know that sheriffs just do what they got to do, and that's all fine and good. But my issue is for the council. He came in off the bridge. He turned on Gulf Boulevard. He made the right on 12th and looped around the horse chute to get to my house, okay? When you turn onto 12th, probably about 50 feet up right past the first driveway on the right-hand side, you've got a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign and a no parking anytime on the street sign, okay? The speed limit signs are 24 inches high by 18 wide. The little sign that says no parking on the street is 12 inches wide by 18 inches high, okay? It's very... At 85-year-old, I mean, I know you've got to park there. Somebody comes around at time, you're not going to see him. You make the turn, and you're looking ahead, and you can't read the little letters on it. On my street, if you came, if you would have turned on 13th Avenue, 13th Street, here's that same sign that's 18 by 24, the speed limit, the no parking signs, 24 wide by 30 wide, okay? So if you look, the other signs on the corner of 12th that's out on Gulf Boulevard, the neighborhood walk sign is 24 by 30. Going ahead to where the crosswalk is between 12th and 13th, there's a don't block the intersection. That's 24 by 30. I just think it's stinky that the guy got a ticket for missing a sign that's basically 12 by 18 with little letters. You know, it's just, I think, I think the sign should be uniform in size. Now, that's the only thing I got to say. It's very easy. If you drive up 12th, you see it's a little sign. And these two speed limit signs, these two speed limit signs, the way it took them, they're the same size, okay? The speed limit signs are the same size. You can see how narrow this 12th Street no parking sign is compared to the one on 13th. 13th is like all the other standard signs that don't block the intersection, neighborhood walk, and all that. But you put a little tiny one in there, and I feel bad for the 85-year-old guy who had to pay a $55 ticket because of some little sign. As soon as you make the turn at 8 o'clock at night, you're not going to be able to read the little letters, but that's a...
Thank you for your comments. Would any other citizens like to speak? All right, citizen comments are now closed. We're on to item three, which is the presentation. "On January 22nd, a man on a surf skiing capsized in rough waters at the Sixth Street access. A strong undercurrent prevented the man from getting back on his vessel while he was also being pulled further out to sea. Fortunately, two brave men came to his aid and helped him back to the shore." One of those men is here this evening, Chief Jeffrey Davidson. Would you please join me at the podium? Where did you want this to stand?
This.
Yeah. All right. All right, Chief Jeffrey Davidson, in recognition of your courageousness and lifesaving actions on January 18th, 2024, the City of Belle Lake thanks you for yourself as active valor. Thank you for your service. Oh, speaking of the fire chief, we're on item number four, which is a presentation from the Fennel-Sunkos Fire and Rescue District.
Good evening, councilmembers and community. Jeffery Davidson, Fire Chief from Fennel-Sunkos. One of the people we work for in the month of February, in the month of February, there were two Belle Lake Beachers, 15 calls for fire and emergency medical services into Belle Lake Beach. The district is moving forward. We've talked about the purchase of the land on the northern end of Inley Rocks Beach to better serve Belle Lake Beach. That property is only 1.2 miles from this location, and it's going to greatly improve our response times. And the current plans are housed an advanced life support fire suppression engine there on the northern end with 3D firefighter paramedics. In the meantime, we have obtained a transport capable rescue unit from the county to utilize when staffing permits over the next year. We are in the process of purchasing a new rescue unit with a ready agreement from the county forthcoming. And we're also working with the county to get that unit funded with two paramedics over the next two years, then it will be here permanent and full-time. We are also getting ready to award a contract to build a fire station and emergency operations safety center on the mainland with anticipated completion date of August of 2025. And that building is going to replace the 58-year-old fire station and serve as our emergency operations center. Kyle has an open invitation to stay at the emergency during hurricanes and major events, so he can stay closer to Belle Lake Beach. A jet ski with a rescue sled that has also been purchased. That was a funded by a very generous donation to the district. And as you know, Fennel-Sunkos was the busiest marine rescue program in the county. And the additional units ensure that rapid access to get victims, to get two victims in the water. We're in the process of outfitting it and training it, training with it, all of our members right now. And it's anticipated that you know, we can service around people. In January, the fire department participated in the causeway cleanup efforts, and we would like to participate in all the future events. We're currently in the planning stages of the Hurricane Expo with the City of Belle Lake, with the dates to be determined. And our firefighters and paramedics completed 860 hours of fire and EMS training during the month of February.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions or comments for the fire chief? Yes.
Congratulations, Chief, on the victory of the service. I have a question. What is a transport capable rescue unit?
Okay. That is an ambulance that's capable to transport to the hospital. The way this works here in Fennels County is that all the fire departments, every unit has an advanced life support unit, and we work off the first responder system. So we're the first people to get to the emergency, the first firefighters and paramedics. All of our personnel are either firefighters, are either paramedics or emergency medical technicians. And having the quicker response signed in the ambulance company, we are called the first responders. The transport to the hospital is done by a private company currently. And there are times and certain criteria where the fire department can transport to the hospital. If it's a life-threatening, and the ambulance is a certain distance away, they haven't gotten there yet, for example, then we can transport that patient, get into a trauma center, get into the emergency room faster. Currently, we don't have that capability, so we have to wait on an ambulance. So this is something we've been working as a team with the county EMS administration. We have a two-year plan that we're getting towards the end of, to have that be a primary unit. So in the event that we arrive on scene of a critical call, that we need to get that patient to the hospital right away, and the ambulance is not quite yet there, then the fire department can transport with the medical director's permission.
That's all. Thank you.
Well, that's much better service to the Well, that's much better service to the citizens.
Any other questions?
Yes. Got a quick question on the second bullet, chief. Is the, the purchase of that land, is there already a facility building there, or are we gonna have to build one?
So, no, there is not a facility there. It's a portion of land that belongs to a business that we're gonna purchase this part of the property in Millland with the contractor that we are entering an agreement with that to build our mainland. They did a bid for that station as well, so we'll be able to move forward with that one pretty quickly.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have just one question. Moving the firehouse to the new location, what will that do to response time for us? How much, how many minutes will it save?
Oh, many, many minutes. So the average response time to Bel Air Beach, provided that they're in quarters or in the area, will be two minutes. Yes, yes, sir. And that's, you know, we try, the county standard is seven and a half minutes, and we try to get our units on scene in four minutes whenever possible, not always possible, especially with the call for traffic. But that has been the challenge for many years, that the distance between our station and Inay Rocks Beach and the next closest station is almost six miles. So we've been working on this project for years, and it's finally kind of come to fruition. But in the meantime, we'll be able to staff that rescue unit, they call it an episodic unit. So whenever we have the personnel, for example, spring break, we're gonna hire back to make sure that that unit is staffed. We're gonna give Kyle to make sure our personnel can stage up here, and we're gonna come in and use the facilities if they needed to. I already forgot. But that's gonna definitely provide a much better service to this area, because our station in Twenty-Seven, Inay Rocks Beach is very busy. The station in Clearwater, which is our automatic need partners, and the station over the bridge in Largo, we all work together. It's quite a long response time, especially if they're not coming from their station and you're getting a unit from the next closest station. So we wanted to always provide the best response times. That's the plan we've been working on for many years now.
You've been, you've been working on this project for a long time, and I appreciate you not giving up and staying on course. We all realize that you're doing it for us.
Thank you. We'll let you know as it moves along, and of course, we want to have you come to any ceremony that we have with that, and we look forward to getting to you and to services to respond to.
Absolutely, looking forward to it. All right, thank you very much, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we are up to item number five. This is a presentation from the Villas County Sheriff's Office, beginning with the monthly law enforcement report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. So as far as the sheriff's office report, the Bel Air Beach monthly stats are consistent with December, so there were no property crimes.
Just stop for one second, can you announce your name?
I'm sorry, I'm called Dearman with the Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
So in the statistics for January, there were no property crimes, no burglaries, no thefts, no motor vehicle thefts or anything like that reported. On top of that, there were two people arrested within the city, both being misdemeanors for driver's licenses and one for violation of permission. After that, our deputies have been really keeping up with the direct patrols that have been requested by the city and the citizens. So between the direct patrols, traffic stops are up to, we had a hundred-and-eighteen traffic stops last month, which is really helping to keep some of the speeding, other traffic violation that forces down, more so for the pedestrian safety and stuff like that, too, especially as we get closer into the spring break and summer months. Beyond that, everything is pretty consistent, again, with the month prior, minimal ordinance violations, the vehicle illegally parked, stuff like that. We actually only had twenty-six last month for any illegal parking citations or warnings. There were two, only two traffic crashes, actually, in January, and both of those basically had no outside influence or were just accidents, nothing that appears to identify any problems, it's gonna just appear as roadway deficiencies or signage.
Any questions or comments for the fourth? Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if you heard the citizen remarks about a parting of street violation. Because I know FDOT has a million different requirements for like signs, and he pointed out the twenty-five mile, I know the speed limit sign has to be a certain standard sign for size. Does a parking sign have to have the same typical neighborhood?
So, yes, any and all roadway signage, including for pedestrians and sidewalks and stuff like that, do have a federal or a Florida Department of Transportation regulation, so they have to be a regulatory size in order to be enforceable. A lot of times, those sizes are based off of the speed limit in the area, the size of the roadway and stuff like that. And again, all of those, even from the Department of Transportation in Florida, conform to the standards of the National Highway Traffic Safety Association, which are consistent throughout the country.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is this sign that he pointed out, according to the visitor, is very small, matter, I don't think it could conform with the rest of the other sign, and I think that would be a good argument to have that taken in the mood, that I don't think it could be done this way.
So, yes, that can be directed towards the county highway. They're the ones that normally regulate and...
Would it be county or would it be your city?
So your city would ultimately be responsible for changing out that sign, and it normally is facilitated through county highway. They're the ones that have the signs relatively available, where they can be purchased from, and you know, any of that.
Correct.
But yes, no, if it is a Department of Transportation sign, which will be a sticker on the back of, then it does conform with the standards for back roadway. Nothing's saying, though, that a larger one can't live in place.
And it does have a sticker that's not before?
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
I have a question about the enforcement of the flashing pedestrian signs.
Yes.
The lights. I recognize that if somebody pushes the button, takes a moment for a car to recognize that it's there, but it seems as though there's a lot of people just spiraling straight through them. What is the enforcement process for those elements in your experience?
So actually, it's interesting you bring that up. Here just last month, and the end of January, and in February, at least two times, this particular shift that we worked, we actually conducted traffic initiatives for the pedestrian crosswalks and the violations, and that's violations between pedestrians and motorists. So either people not pushing the button, or waiting for the signage, or just running across the road, or just not even utilizing them at all. So we did do initiative on that. I don't have the numbers with me, I can say that they were highly effective. We actually did that amongst all of the huge cities, from Bel Air Beach all the way south to Medea Beach. Those actually seem to be quite fruitful. Most of it was a general education, that we were, you know, more so disinforming and trying to remind people, please utilize these things, they're here for a reason, they really do make a difference in that safety. So we have been actively, just on our own accord, looking into that and trying to enforce it more, have a little bit more visibility. A lot of times deputies now, especially during the night hours, are sitting there somewhere within the vicinity of these crosswalks in order to be able to see them, observe them, and be visible in that same area, hopefully just provide a little bit more enforcement guidance.
Very good, thank you.
I'm gonna add to that. I'm hoping that they're also watching the pedestrians, because there is some personal responsibility. You don't select a button as you're entering the street. It's, there's been many times where I've had to lock them out, where people just are not paying attention or taking for granted that that light is going to automatically cause immediate fatalities.
Yes, and that's the big thing, I'd say that we were equally enforcing it between any violations with pedestrians or motor vehicles, a lot of that being the situation where a pedestrian will just step out, as you're describing, and causing a motor vehicle to take an evasive action, or, you know, some sort of defensive action, normally by hitting the brakes pretty hard. So, you know, with that, I do agree, you know, that is a major portion of it, and the education that I put out to the deputies that work for me and stuff along these beaches and various initiatives was, you know, if we explain it more so to the citizens that regardless of right of way, if the light's flashing, you know, and you feel you can safely walk, it doesn't beat the laws of physics. So ultimately, who's gonna win that battle when we're pushing through that? So even more so is kind of a way of putting it in our minds.
Well, while we're talking about safety and saving lives, I've noticed that lately, more than I've ever seen, these fast motorcycles, they suddenly don't follow any rules, any laws whatsoever, and they're reading between cars. I was coming home, maybe before yesterday, oh, no, 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 it was Friday, I was coming home, and one of those little Japanese racers decided that he was going to pass all the cars entering causeable on, on, basically the shoulder of the bridge, and he was probably doing sixty. I see it all the time, but what I don't see is them getting pulled. Is it just bad timing? They know what they're looking for? What's going on in Villas County?
So, in general, just from my best understanding and my enforcement actions on it, it's interesting to say that just actually one of these statistics in here, I believe, for the driving license suspended was mine, in which there were two motorcycles that were going in towards Largo off of the beach. I clocked them at, well, they were a hundred miles an hour on the shoulder, passing a series of parts. The hard part with that is the speed of these motorcycles, their ability of maneuvering and stuff like that, it's hard for us to be able to catch up to them in a manner enough to efficiently catch them, and catch up to them without them noticing that we are there following or something like that. So we're trying to utilize a little bit more strategy. If we can, we'll just try and let other deputies that are in the area or other law enforcement that are down the road in the direction they're traveling know, so that way we can kind of pick them up as they are. And in that, we're requesting our helicopter a lot of times to see if they can fly over, get eyes on them, and then hopefully we have a little bit more of a hand effort. Those violations and stuff like that take more time, a lot more resources, and so those traffic stops or that enforcement is happening way down the road, or even out there, taking time, as we are doing research to find out who those operators are, and then administratively opening up citations and stuff and sending it to them.
Okay, I appreciate you answering that question. Do we have any other questions or comments? For the fourth? No? All right, thank you so much. All right, now we're on to the monthly code enforcement report.
Good evening, Mayor, Karen Conlon, Deputy Trump from Penaltz County Sheriff's Office. We actually had a pretty good month for code enforcement, with violations actually being moved down. We did have a few new cases of, excuse me, unpermitted remodels, which all of the cases have been able to work with the people or the contractors, however, we've been able to close all of them with most of them obtaining permits. Other than that, we have, I just had thirty-three entries, but basically it's a variation of all kinds of different work uses, anything from, we're still working with a couple of pools, to maybe some overgrowth in plants and things like that, but for the most part, the homeowners and everything have been pretty receptive as far as me going up, talking to them, or working with them, and trying to go through problems. With that, I would like to just add one thing, if I could, to anybody that is watching the citizens of Bel Air Beach, is if you are contracting for some type of a service, please make sure that they are licensed contractors, and make sure that you have some type of a contract, written contracts, that you know exactly what you're getting into and what your responsibilities would be. And I'm just gonna use one example without names or anything else, but I came across a residence that was just beginning a solar install, and I checked the contractors out and found that they had no permits through the city, no permits through the county, the company had not even been registered through the county or the state. We found out later they had a parent company, which begins in California, they were registered with the state, but basically there were no permits. I had made contact with the elderly lady that lives there by herself, she had been approached by this solar company, and they gave her some instructive story that she would not have to pay for any of this, and it was all going to be installed for free, and she had no contract, nothing written, she had only one phone number in California for somebody that she could attempt to call. And, excuse me, working through, working with her, and also working with Villas County, it was found that basically they had no permits or anything else, no contracts, and with the information that she was able to give us and work with, working with her, she ended up basically telling the company that she no longer wanted her service, or their services, which was probably a wise approval, so just, just a reminder to everybody is make sure you have contracts, make sure you know what you're responsible for, and make sure they're licensed contractors, so, you know, they are doing a good job for you.
I'm curious, would this be the same company that had the door, the more solicitors?
It may be possible, but I didn't get that far.
I'd have to check the record on that, doesn't ring a bell. Just, just curious. There was a solar company that was doing the door, the more solicitors. Okay. Any questions or comments for the mayor? Yes, Mr. Mayor? I'm gonna jump on the mayor's bandwagon on the solicitation, because it seemed to be getting a lot of like magazine people. I, I don't know your hours, I don't wanna know your hours, especially when I don't know your hours, but it seemed like they're early and late after midnight, and you can spot when they have duty, footwork. I see it becoming like you're a teller.
What I can add to that is at any point, if anybody has any solicitors or anything else, or suspicious people for that matter, if you don't know who they are, contact the sheriff's office, let us go and make contact with these guys, and we will take care of business. So with no problem. That's what we're here for, and, you know, going back on that as far as my hours, my hours vary a little bit, and I'm going to, especially as we're going into the warmer months here and going into spring break, I'm gonna start varying my hours a little bit more, because we're gonna be trying to do, or I'm gonna be trying to do at least a little more beach controls, and everything else for the ordinance, or the ordinances out on the beach and everything else. So I vary a little bit, just so I can do different things, but work Sundays once in a while, so that we can, like I had one day, you know, contractors out working on a house on the Sunday, made contact with them, they're very nice, but we told them, you know, can't do that, so.
I have one question.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? No? I will add that I had some solicitors come by my house the other day, and so I actually bought some of their product as evidence, but the auction cookies did not last the rest of the evening, so never mind.
Well, the evidence is gone, then.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
All right, now we're on to item six, the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we sit here now, it is March fourth, twenty-twenty-four, we are in what should be the last week of session, absent some extension. I don't have signed, signed knowledge of one, I just, you never know what may happen. There's a lot to track and not a lot to report right now. There's some clear division on some significant bills between what the Senate is doing and what the House is doing, while not the same before here, by way of example, the short-term rental bill has passed the Senate, it's passed the House, but in different versions. They need the same version passed both chambers before the governor can sign it, and there's only four days left for them to do so. One of the challenges we face in tracking and accurately predicting what will happen in the legislative session is during the last three days of session, the, each of the chambers are able to suspend some rules and make things happen a little more quickly, or by some, not altogether unpredictable, but unorthodox means. And so until, until it's over, until that handkerchief falls for signing die on Friday, it is hard to say precisely how this will shake out. This will not be like last session, where there was just a ton of legislation approved by the supermajority and signed by the governor. I think each chamber, as well as the executive branch, are asserting a little bit more of their independent judgment, which we didn't see quite as much at last session, as evidenced by the governor's veto in the last week on the social media bill. So we are tracking it closely, we'll get an end of session report from, from my office on, in terms of what... from, from my office on in terms of what, what's come down and as well as any Florida League of Cities updates you may be tracking and provide legislative updates. Otherwise, continue, as, as you know from our meeting last week, we've begun the land development code review, and your input is critical to that, subject to all the cautions and advisories that gave you at that meeting. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, look forward to what should be an interesting month in March with our elections here. We, I will be closely tracking the results and also how all of those play out in the event that you won or all of them don't, don't succeed, or if they all succeed for that matter, what that means for us in providing you an update post-election day on. Okay, now. So that's, that's the issue I'm probably following most closely from this committee.
Any questions or comments for the city attorney, Mr. Mayor? Short term, yes, sir. I know there's only four days left and there's some good bills that aren't matching up. But would that, either version, would that impact us, Beller Beach? Because I'm getting a lot of residents, no, no one knows how to read these things, I think, because.
I think that's a really accurate way of saying this. No one knows how to read these, including the legislators. The, the, the short answer is yes and no. The no of it is it doesn't change your rules. Yes, because it applies statewide. If you were to do something to change your regulations, if you rock the boat, go give it. But if we, if we don't rock the boat in their current form, and of course, they can change this in the next four days, in their current form, they preserve the, the language in codes for any restriction adopted before June 2011. Your land development codes governing duration and frequency pre-date 2011 year, you should, bold and underlined, should, be fine. However, when you look at the Senate bill, for example, it has language in there that says, notwithstanding the preemption in 5090327A. Well, none of the courts have found that 7A, which is, talks about that lodging and restaurants regulation is preempted to the state. No court has ever found that that is a preemption of a city's regulation of short-term rentals. And by just adding a notwithstanding this, it suggests they're trying to broaden and say, oh, always meant this. Everybody knew that. So I can't say for sure. And I think there's good reason when you see some of that confusion. On its plain terms, it doesn't, it does not void or strike the safe harbor for pre-2011s.
That's my question.
On its face, it does not do that. Will they attempt to say it does otherwise somehow? Who knows?
Either version.
Either version does not. So for this community, that's why I said at the outset, it's of less concern here. I still think it's a concern because it's a new preemption and every preemption should trouble us as, as communities that thrive on the rule. And again, my, my, to the extent I'm, I'm, sound like I'm equivocating, it's only because they're adding some language that I think is sort of changing the script and saying, it was always this way. So that's just clarifying a thing you could never do. But I don't think it would void your pre-2011 restrictions in its current, in either current form. Again, and by the way, when I say they're not the same, the differences are significant. It's not simply like one of them has a sixty-day registration and the other has a ninety day. The Senate bill, for example, allows you to regulate or have a registration based with an occupancy limitation based on two per bedroom plus two with some additional permission for certain square footage. The House version, up until recently, said sleeping accommodations. They're suggesting that that's going to be interpreted based on the fire code. Well, the fire code was never intended for overnight stays. It's intended for how many people can safely evacuate space during an event. So if you have a birthday party, how many people can safely get out? Not many people can sleep here, generate waste here and all those other things. So those are some differences. The Senate, the House bill, for example, also has language saying that the registration process, to the extent that communities can create a registration process, will be administered by the tax collector. That's never been a part of the discourse before this year. So, and it's not the Senate version. So if they're going to work it out, they have some real differences to resolve. And the, the House sponsor, Representative Griffiths, as recently as last week in the press, was saying the House will not be taking up the Senate's version. So it sounds like there's a little bit of a game of chicken, legislative chicken happening on who's going to blank.
Which just seems every legislature's session for as long as I can remember, something comes up. Yeah. It's probably heading to the finals.
Yeah. And, and, and those, that's frankly the thing that's easy to focus on. There's a lot more preemptions that we haven't been talking about. And once we know the lay of the land, we'll talk about there's a bill that I think is going to be unsuccessful that dealt with when you could hire and fire a city manager, a city attorney. You know, I, I don't know what's purpose that certain state, but those are the sorts of things. It's more than you realize and more than your average citizen might take interest in, but definitely affects your job up here, whether you're four or five or seven.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Moore, I did have one question. I heard rumblings of a hospital bill that would, or maybe it was a memo, that would exempt those currently serving from Form 6. Has that gained any traction at all?
If it has, Mayor, I'm not aware of it. I'll search for it. I imagine if it had gained traction, it would be closer to the front page media, given the dozens of resignations across the state. But I will continue, I'll look into that. If I find something, I'll circulate it. I would take silence as a no in terms of my follow-up.
I want to say it was early last week I got this, and I just, I wasn't able to move on. I didn't think it was going anywhere, but still, I'll pass it off to you eventually.
I appreciate that. It is a challenge when you're tracking the legislative session because something like that can get buried in a bill that has little else to do with form states. It's just an ethics code and, you know, they throw this writer in. So if you do have any resources, and that goes for all four of you, if there is something that you, while I generally work for the council as a whole, if there's a discreet thing, you say, hey, I heard this, is this true about the session? Or here's somebody telling me House Bill 8 exempt my 309, is this and that true? I'm happy to look into it if it's related to city businesses.
I just assumed it was going nowhere because it's as big of a deal as is, it's not being talked about. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. I appreciate all the updates. All right, now we're on to item number seven. Mr. Reefer, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Levitt stepped out, but addressing the no parking on the street signs. I do know it was 2018 when we downsized those signs, but I will check the requirements. Tried to do a quick search, couldn't find it. I'll get some items from the county on the what size they actually need to be for our residential streets. I wanted to mention to him, I wasn't sure if he was aware that we have the, the on-street parking, you know, the residents can call in, let us know that they're having a party. You know, we send it to the sheriff's office and then they're aware so that nobody gets to get in. The, going through the city manager report, the Gulf Harbor underground, we're still moving along with that. The, we're going out on the north side, we're getting refusal signatures if Duke Energy is requesting that we have our easement for the resident where the equipment's going. So that is what the utility contractors in Florida are doing right now. They're just getting a hold of people and either getting a signature yes or no if they can get an easement for that property. Again, south side, Southside College Way, we're pending on Duke at this point. So we're waiting on that. I will say though, that we have received all of our funding from any four up to this fiscal year from the counties. So we're all up to date on that. We paid and received the reimbursement. The stormwater improvement project, the start date for that is going to be March 18th. Excited to get that going. The code review project, we are going to cover chapter 94 zoning at our next work session. And that was chosen because it's a very broad section and it kind of bounces in a lot of different elements of the code. And I think discussing that upfront will help us as we go through other sections. The R I P for audit services, last year, Salt March came in, in the March meeting with the draft. They do not have the draft complete, but it's supposed to be done this month. But the way we're going to do it is we're going to get the draft, take it to the audit committee, have them look it over, make any recommendations, and then we'll bring it to council where Salt Marshall did their presentation for the acceptance. The new website launched last Thursday. I sent an email out just to let you know. We're still kind of working through some of the, the kinks, making sure all our content got transferred over. But we, we are excited to have the new format. It's based on the Civic Plus layout that a lot of cities, city of the union, top of all, that are used. But hopefully what this does is we can set it up in a way that our citizens can find information quickly that they're looking for. But any suggestions you have, when you preview that site, please just fill it out and we'll make adjustments.
I think the, the website looks great. It's probably easier for someone who's never been there, because I knew where to go for everything prior to the new website. So it took me a while to find it, the code and things like that. Nice job.
And, well, we got an idea from what other cities have done. We want to open up a photo submission for the residents that we can use on the website. So modern phones takes up their pictures these days. That's the way to capture all the different images in the city. It's in the sunsets and beach pictures. We've been interviewing for the admin assistant. We've had so far, five interviews we set up. We actually had, we have two candidates that we're considering. When it came to the question, we kind of saw this coming, for the hourly wage, we readvertise it at the eighteen dollars per hour. The candidates that we have considering a position who are suggesting that they would start at twenty dollars per hour. Now, the eighteen dollars per hour was our lowest paid wage, but we raised the service worker to wage last meeting that went from eighteen to twenty. So right now, with the vacancy that we've had in the admin assistant position, we have the money. We don't need to make a budget adjustment to make that two dollar increase, but I wanted to get the council's consideration on that because it would have to pass in the next budget to maintain this position.
We can get motioned. No, we can just do an informal vote because it's not a price to change this year. It's a place everyone starts.
I think we have to recognize current marketplaces. That's what it's demanding. And I find that if you try to go too low, you end up spending more money because you may be affected. So the right candidate, yes.
The two dollars an hour might actually keep them around, whereas eighteen might get a train and then they go to another municipality. So I think it's a good idea.
I do as well. So the candidates that you already interviewed, Kyle?
Yes.
Have they been amenable to whatever our rate was at that time? Would you guys have been in a position where you would make the offer to one of them based on their skill sets and background and ability to do the job?
So the two candidates that we interviewed that fell out of the city application did not indicate the wage that they were considering for the position. So it came up in the interview. We had advertised on the website at eighteen dollars per hour, but that's the only spot. So if they didn't, if they saw the admin is supposed to have a sign, they might have thought maybe it was negotiable. But just by the candidates that we have, our best candidates, eighteen was a low low to start.
Okay. So if we raise it to twenty, which I think we're all in mind with, do you feel comfortable that you have a candidate in mind that would be willing to accept that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not too worried. So did you have a candidate that might prefer who was at the count because it was dead twenty?
No, the only, the only two candidates that we interviewed that we feel are qualified, both of them have indicated that they would like to start at twenty dollars per hour. We have one candidate in mind that we would select, but I just wanted to get the council's approval because it is limited.
Thanks.
Something we want to continue with.
Any other questions? City manager?
I do. So Kyle, on the stormwater improvements projects, has the contractor had the opportunity to sit down with the city and lay out a plan with respect to what streets they're going to begin and so on until the project is complete?
We have not had a pre-construction meeting on site, but they have been agreeable to whatever we need. So given that Mr. Flute is doing the study right now for the ninth street area, if that is complete and we have the presentation, but we know what we're doing, I would consider that the southern part of the town the more crucial to get to before storm season. So as long as we're ready and we know what we're doing, I would recommend that we start on the southern end. But right now, there isn't a set schedule.
Okay.
More budget. More budget.
Oh, right. We need to, we need to find out what, Mr. Flute needs to come back and let us know where we're at on that.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor.
That's fine. That's fine. I just want to make sure I have complete confidence in you for staff. When the project starts, when we get in, questions, would somebody would say, gee, miss, why was this street done before that street? That we're prepared to have, and I mean, we'll have, we'll have an answer for why, whether it was based on the current condition of Street A, B, or C was worse off based on the studies that we did, that type of thing. So that there's some semblance of reasonability there as to why you did Street A before Street B and so on. So we're prepared for that.
And then we have discussed with the contractor, you know, grouping four to five streets together. So I think they'll be looking into us to give insight on where they're, where we're starting, because we've already kind of had conversations on, you know, where, depending on what we're doing on Ninth Street. So.
Does that make sense? We don't want the contractor jumping back and forth to go from the north side to the south side, etc. So that's all good. Thank you.
And they, they will be doing the door hangers, local floor, and interacting directly with residents for information, you know, when they come through on those streets. So we'll be putting, they'll be knocking on the doors. If the resident answers, you know, explaining to them what the project timeline is for that area. And then if they're not there, they're going to leave a contact information so that they get the information if they want. And they will be working, you know, as far as where the park right on one side, getting access to their driveway and all that.
Great. Thanks.
You want us?
Yes.
Please, Mr. Flute's been reporting.
His timeline was, it was one to two months. I can follow up on and find where he's at.
I think it'd be good if we had a next working session.
They're going to be pushing. Next working session is three weeks, two weeks?
Mayor, I think we may be speaking to that, but we're trying to figure out the timing of the next working session within the election and other scheduling concerns for the former members.
True. I'd say whenever these guys report, we should just get it immediately. We can look at it on our own time, not have to wait on reservation from them. Okay. I had, I think, was I your other question? I had a question also. We spoke briefly this morning about the bridge closures. Could you give me detail on that?
Right now, I heard back from Brian Mallroom in the county. He said that he does not know of any closure, closure scheduled, but that he would check into it because they updated on a weekly basis and then let me know.
What is the work that they're doing on the bridge?
I don't know. I'll find it out.
They're putting signs on the bridge. Can somebody explain to me why we're closing the bridge during the busy season?
It's, it's, the, the sign says lane closures, and I think it's at night, not during the day.
What is the work at night? But I mean, what, is it ten o'clock at night or six in the morning?
I think that that bridge is wide enough for three lanes in the middle. So they're probably going ahead and go around, but. So they're probably going ahead and go around whatever jams to, you know. It definitely is raising concerns in the community because everyone's wondering if they're going to have to go down the Indian Rock Beach to get to publics.
So right now, no. But if there is any concern with the way they are doing it, just let me know.
If you, if you do hear anything from the family, would you mind sending out a newsletter just to let everyone in the city know?
Sure. I just want to mention real quick, the hurricane information that we're going to be doing is on April 3rd, which is a Wednesday. And that's going to involve the Pels, South Coast Fire Department, the city, the Pels County Emergency Management, experts in the field of meteorology, Mike Placer, he committed, and insurance agents to give updates on the current state of insurance in Florida. Trying to get FEMA, a FEMA representative there. But yeah, 6:30 to 8:30. And the idea is that we're going to have people separate information for these different organizations, but also to have a general, like, lecture area for audience seating where, you know, every third of minutes is a presentation. Is that it? That is it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Reefer. Now we are on to the City Clerk Report. Hey.
I have nothing for this report.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the City Clerk? Thank you very much. All right, now we are on to the consenting agenda. This is items nine and 10. This is for approval of the February 5th, 2024 City Council meeting minutes and approval of the February 27th, 2024 City Council work session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? The motion of approval is written and presented. Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consenting agenda passes. All right, now we are on to the regular agenda, item 11. This is for consideration of ordinance 24-01. This is the second reading. City Attorney Moore.
Compliment, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance 2024-01. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bellar Beach, meaning Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, Division 1, generally, to create Section 2-31 of the city's code ordinances entitled Annual Salary for Members of the City Council Guidelines Governing Reimbursement, providing for the implementation of administrative actions, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This has been the second and final reading of ordinance number 2024-01 by Title I, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we proceed, would any citizen like to comment on this proposed ordinance? All right, seeing as we have none, citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I need a motion to approve the ordinance 24-01. It's a vote. Motion made by Lloyd Roberts. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Elliott. Mr. Roberts, you have a floor.
Yeah, we've, we've discussed this and we've discussed the benefits as to why we think this would improve our city interest for people wanting to be in council. It's the main driver, I believe. It's a, it's a minimalist amount of money compared to other cities in the area. And I think our mayor did a good job of providing us with that information, showing what some of the other cities were paying their council members or commission members. So based on those facts, I think it makes sense for us to do this, and I think we should look to vote.
Big Miss Roberts, would anyone else like to comment on this? All right, I would just like to, to add that if this passes, it does not impact this council, but it does give future councils the ability to, to at least give something back to people who serve. Also, I believe this goes hand in hand with items that are appearing on the ballot in the upcoming election. So if there are no other comments, Brett Engle, you please call for it.
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gass?
Yes, and so it passes unanimously. Good work to do, I think. Thank you very much, Counsel, for assisting with this ordinance. All right, now we are on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Seeing as we have none unfinished businesses, now over the way. Now we're on to item number 13. There was no 12, there was no, there was no 12 or 13, I just. So now we're on to City Council comments. This month, we begin with Councilman Baker.
Just briefly, I've been working with Senator Scott's office still with his head by P Sue, which is going back to Asher Booney, which is returning for the state. But I appreciate the counsel and my co-counsel, Carson Campbell, with this study that's coming up with the flooding, because there's so many residents in the southern end. It's, yeah, right here, it's just, I'm pulling my hair out, frustrated over the 50% rule, values of homes are not, I openly doubt, given, it's really, they're telling us all the tariffs and now it comes down to me. So I'm going to keep working at it, so I can promise you, I feel your pain. It could happen to me, it could happen to anybody here. So I'll be out tomorrow at your house.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Up next is Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. As most of us know, we have some items that are going to be on, for a vote coming up on the 19th. So anybody listening to this meeting, I would like to recommend that you take the time to read those items and understand them. And if there's some questions you may have, please make every opportunity you can to contact anybody up here on the council. I'm probably, I'm probably, I'm going to be making my rounds around the city, knocking on doors, asking anybody if you have any questions, if there's any way that I can help clarify some of the information we're going to be voting for, or perhaps we could do that. It's an important set of changes that we're proposing to the city charter, and I think it's something that everybody should consider very closely. I believe all four of the items would help our city. And I wasn't happy to talk to anybody out there with a citizen standpoint to answer any questions we may have. Thank you.
Big Miss Roberts? And then it's Councilmember.
Thank you. I feel very privileged to be here each time, still in all the fact that we have such a quality of life. Now it is. Sorry about that. It's been a while. I feel very privileged to here, live here in Bellar Beach and enjoy our lifestyle very, very much. Because we live in a coastal community, I'm very deeply interested in environmental issues. And so with that, I'll be obviously looking very closely at our stormwater improvement project. And I am attending a meeting Wednesday to hear a report from St. Petersburg regarding their own stormwater improvement project this other day. So I'd like to hear about their plans and anything else that I can bring back to this group. With that, I attended the beginning launch of the Pinellas beautiful effort for their litter abatement. And so I did that last week. And I'm getting involved also with the Sierra Club, and we'll be learning more about some of the environmental issues that they're involved in. Sorry, I'm losing my voice right now. So, and to follow up on what you said, Mr. Bankard, the. Oh, yes, thank you very much. The 50% rule, just so that people are aware, I did hear of another house that is likely coming up for sale because the individuals are just constrained by that rule and the increasing risk of flooding. They're just finished, and so they're losing another sub-labor sometimes. So it's important to you, and I think you could consider.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Elliott, since we're talking about the 50% rule, I know that if we did move forward and reduce it one year, it would solve all the problems. But what it will do is give a more manageable timeline. If you, if you have to do something that's on your house and a little bit of patience and planning, perhaps some of these homes will be able to get the upgrades that they'd like to have. Five years is a long, long time, especially in an area where we're subject to soft water, things break. If you're in one of the lower lying areas, stormwater's a problem. There's many, many reasons why five years is just way too long for Bellar Beach. And whenever I realize that there were other communities that seemed to be reaping all the benefits without all the time, it only seemed fair that we should be looking into that. And I know that City Manager Reefer is, is looking deeper into this to make sure that we're doing the right thing. Right now, it looks like switching to one year is the right thing to do. And so stay tuned. Hopefully we'll get this cleaned up a little bit more where it's not quite so, the pill is swallowed. All right, as always, I'd like to thank everyone who was here tonight, who watched this meeting remotely. As a resident of Bellar Beach, I'd like to also remind everyone, I along with you just said, of how important this upcoming election is to our city. Four charter amendments on the ballot address a recent intrusive legislation designed to keep good candidates out of local government. I and countless of others believe that local government is best run by the people who live within its boundaries. Tallahassee preemptions and overregulation tear away at the thread of our unique, friendly, and beautiful community. As residents of Bellar Beach, it's up to us to demonstrate that only we know what's best for our community. These amendments will reduce the number of council members and send a clear message to Tallahassee that we are a strong community willing to adapt to protect our island way of life. On March the 19th, please join me in voting yes for amendments one through four. With that being said, do I have a motion? Motioner? Motion is made by Frank Baker and seconded by Kim Shaw Elliott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good night.